Okay, if I can ask everybody to please rise for tonight's invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Rick Malagany of Fairhope Christian Church. If you'll please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Most gracious and loving God, we thank you for this time and for this place and opportunity to come together to discuss the future of this fair city. We thank you for these leaders that stand before us. We thank you for all who are participating in this form of government. We ask your blessing upon this meeting and we ask for your strength, your guidance, and your wisdom tonight as we deliberate. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Okay, council first item of business is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and agenda meetings which were held on April 22nd. Do you have any changes, additions, or deletions to those minutes as submitted?
I make a motion we approve as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, you have a presentation to ecumenical ministries?
Well, I'm also going to do the proclamation at the end unless you want me to do it before.
Whatever, I put it ahead of your report so we can have it.
Oh, there you go.
Because we have such a long meeting, I thought that we could get people on their way.
Let's see, I have two proclamations, so... Is there somebody here to have the proclamation for the ecumenical ministry?
Excellent. First of all, I want to thank you and the regulations for their good and and so we are community. I convinced the person to put it up. It has a lot more information about the good world. I would like to present the proclamation of the Act of the City of Fairhope commending ecumenical ministries of Auburn County, GMIs, for 50 years of service. The example set by the MIBO staff donors shows how communities can be improved civilly when citizens of all denominations raise their economic status and political equations work together in a common community. We've all done it pretty much a long time, and we so appreciate it. The City of Fairhope expresses its sincere and deep appreciation for ecumenical ministries and it volunteers tens of thousands of hours of volunteer and cooperative work. It resolved that the last Sunday in Champaign will be recognized as Ecumenical Ministry Day and also the county. Just part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for this great honor for the technical ministries.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you're bringing it to the council.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
It was our pleasure.
And I'm not sure if there's somebody to accept the proclamation for National Safe Boating. I usually have it in my notes, I just didn't have it this time. Come on up. National Safe Boating. Whereas the National Safe Boating is May 18th, 2019, and boating safety partners across the US and Canada are teaming up to promote safe and responsible boating, including voluntary wear of life jackets, and life jacket wear is the number one precaution at voter-protected safe lives. And the Fairhope Police Pulling Chapter of the US Postal Service is dedicated to improving the knowledge, skills, and abilities of the recreational boaters in order to reduce deaths and injuries. Now, therefore, in an effort to raise public awareness of these important issues, I, Karen Wilson, as mayor of the City of Fairhope, do hereby proclaim, May 18th through 24th, 2019, as the National Safe Boating and encourages all our citizens to join with the Fairhope US Postal, so the pillow chapter, not the hospital, and safe advantage of voter education and information offered to further enhance safe and enjoyable boating on our nation's water.
That's where it is.
Absolutely.
Hey. They've got to get something before, I suppose. Anyone want to talk about what's happening here? If you do, you have children, make sure they have a white jacket on them. You want to put a whistle, a blither, on the jacket itself, on the jacket, just when you pack it. In case they're, you know, running into a collision, they might vote different ways. And our common law, he is, you, intent about wearing your life jacket, you know. It's simple to do. I do it, you know.
The sound on the whistle is easier to find if somebody yelling help. We can get seven of the sounds, because the whistle is more of a straight line than the sound.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and now I'm going to ask Ms. Lisa Miller with Alabama Municipal Electric Authority, Mr. Richard Peterson, Operations Director, to join me up front for some special presentations.
As most of you know, Fairhope is a member city of the Alabama Municipal Electric Authority. I'm the representative board member from the City of Fairhope, and we purchase our electrical power through AUMEA, through various purchase power agreements. I'm going to have Ms. Miller, if I might, explain a little bit about this AUMEA scholarship program. We're going to be giving out four scholarships to deserving high school seniors from Fairhope that are served by Fairhope Utilities. And these have been presented once at the awards ceremony last week, and we're going to give out not only that one that was given out, but the other three tonight. So, Ms. Miller, if you'll give an explanation of the scholarship.
Thank you, Council President Burrell, and thank you council members for having AUMEA present tonight on the agenda. It's always an honor and a pleasure for us to present these scholarships, $2,500 each, four scholarships, to deserving, as all students are deserving, but to students here in the City of Fairhope. Since 1992, AUMEA has been sponsoring the scholarship program for those who are served by the City of Fairhope, the Electric Department, the City of Fairhope, as well as ten other member cities in AUMEA's footprint. Since that time, we have given over $2.5 million to students throughout our footprint, from northeast Alabama down to the Alabama Gulf Coast. As always, the City of Fairhope does a great job in promoting this program, not only throughout your community, through the schools and councils, and y'all have a tremendous partnership with those schools, and we feel it's incumbent upon us as business representatives, as industry, to make sure that we are educating, having a very skilled workforce for the future. And we just hope that this $2,500 is put to good use, we know it will be, and it's always good to give $2,500 that mom and daddy or legal guardians don't have to come up with. So, again, thank you so very much. Each of our member cities have available to them $10,000 in scholarships each year. So, again, thank you so much, council and mayor, for having us tonight and being a part of this great presentation.
And Lisa, thank you for traveling from Montgomery.
Yes, sir. Thank you, our pleasure.
Tonight, at this special occasion. So, I'm going to read the scholarship winners. If you're in attendance, if you'll please come forward and receive your award, and maybe stay up here for a photo if you can move over here. The first scholarship winner is Ms. Erica Elizabeth Turcher. She is a senior at Fairhope High School, and she plans to attend the University of Alabama in Birmingham. She is a member of the National Honor Society, Project Outreach, and Girl Service Club. Her community service includes the teen volunteer program at the University of South Alabama Children's and Women's Hospital. Ms. Turcher, are you here tonight? Okay. The second scholarship recipient is Ms. Claire Olivia Plum. She's a senior, also at Fairhope High School, and plans to attend the University of Alabama and major in nursing. She's a member of the National Honor Society, Spanish Club, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and she volunteered with Camp Beckwith, Little Sisters of the Poor in Mobile, Renditian Assisted Living, and she helped organize a church event at Coastal Church. Congratulations. Third recipient is Andrew Paul Ynt. He's also a senior at Fairhope High School. He plans to attend Auburn University and major in chemical engineering. Andrew is a member of the National Honor Society, Mew Alpha Theta Math Honor Society, Heat Club, French Club, Heat Club, again, it says, the Involved in the Club and the Eastern Shore Youth Leadership Program. His community service includes Fairhope Rotary Youth Club and Sierra Club, Alabama Chapter. I don't see Mr. Ynt here, but I see him.
Yes.
Look, I can attest that these seniors having one, that they're all graduating tomorrow, they have a big case of senioritis, so they're out, I think, in their pre-graduation ceremony, our celebration mode today. The fourth winner, and this is for the AUMEA Vocational School Scholarship, Madeline Grace Banks. She is a senior at Fairhope High School. She plans to attend the Abida Institute in Birmingham to study cosmetology and massage. She was a member of the robotics team, and she was on the swim team at Fairhope High School. She has worked at her church as a special needs Sunday school helper for two years. Ms. Madeline Grace Banks. Is she here? Also a case of senioritis. And if we can get this one up here for a photo, Mayor, can you take a photo? Okay, Mayor, you want to join us?
Yes. Come on up.
Okay, we'll get one of you, and then we'll get one with Mom. Everybody's blinking, I just got a sign, someone's blinking. Come on in.
It's casino night, that has to be better. I always say it's like you.
Okay. Huh?
As Claire's mother reminded us as we were up there, it is casino night as well, so maybe that's where all the seniors are tonight. I think that's a big, big fun event they're having down at Oak Hollow Farms tonight. Okay, moving on to number four on tonight's agenda, this will be a report of the mayor. Mayor Wilson, your report, please, I know that includes a presentation of the overall six-month of our budget.
I'm working two different presentations, so... I have, let me get this up to the top here. Here we go. The six-month budget review was intended for the work session, so when I saw it, I needed to do it under the mayor report. I have condensed this down more because it's a 30-minute report, and I don't think any of us want to add that to the council.
And I just turned the speaker on, thank you Jeff. So, this was intended for the work session, council work session, but now that I'm doing it during the mayor report, I've condensed it, and I'm trying to go through this very Keep in mind on these figures, this is a six-month snapshot of where the city and where utilities are, and this doesn't mean that if something, it might be over 50 percent in its expenses, then it's not going to be, going to be over budget by the end of year. Some departments are able to do acquisitions and make purchases and finish projects sooner than some of the other departments have, so that's where we are on that. So, starting with police, the capital projects are under 106,000. Out of this, 32,000 is expected to come out for car cameras, and we need to purchase four additional radars for around $5,000. The police officer involved in an accident, hopefully insurance will pay about 15,000 to 20,000, and we'll have to cover the total purchase to replace is 42,000. Operating expenses are looking good for the six-month mark and on track. Personnel, all budgeted positions filled except one, which has been posted. The overall for budget for just expenses is 48 percent. I also want to mention for the police department, because I was going to put this in my mayor report, is that the FBI has a citizen academy, and they recently contacted our police department about conducting two, two-and-a-half-hour classes here in Fairhope. Fairhope police have been working with the FBI, our local churches, and their members on safety issues. The churches will be participating in the citizen academy. For parks and recs, the capital, replastering of the indoor pool, spray foaming of pool ceiling, and infrared heaters at the pool check, and repainting inside of the pool totaling 122,000 will be rebudgeted in 2020. Architect has plans for ADA compliant and ramps at the football stadium, and Tom expects this to be done by end of summer. Boys and girls club playground, we had $75,000 in the budget, and this is just to start kind of a first phase of upgrading that park. We're having a citizen engagement meeting Thursday at 5:30 at the Rotary Youth to discuss conceptual plans that has been built out of a bunch of stakeholder meetings over the last few months. And $300,000 for docks, seawall is in progress. We'll know later if this project is expected for completion in this fiscal year. Parks and rec continued. The revenue for parks and, uh-oh, hold on. Okay, the revenue for, considerably down as of March 31st, but summer months to come will see increases. The golf clubhouse revenue, a bit low for six-month mark, is good considering rainy winter and all of the remodeling that they went through, but I do think that the next half will be a lot more profitable. Operating expenses, rec expenditures are under budget at the six-month mark. Personnel, all that is lacking is a part-time runner, and the golf grounds still has two seasonal positions and one part-time position to hire, and they've been posted. Golf clubhouse overall budget is, revenues at 41 percent with the busier next half coming this next six months, and expenses are at 52 percent. Golf grounds is, it's at budget for the six-month, and expenses are at 42 percent. Rec overall, revenues 36 percent and expenses 43 percent. We do expect the second half to be more. And the marina, our Fairhope docks, is at 28 percent revenue and 20 percent expenses. So, we're hoping that the summer with all the boating will increase that. This was going to be in my mayor report, so I thought it would appropriate for, under parks and recs. Updates on city reports, junior golf clinics will be held at Quail Creek on June 24th, and the clinics will run for four consecutive weeks and target children ages five to 17. The cost is $99, and it'll happen between 10:00 and 11:00 a.m. Women's pole vaulting placed first, second, and third at the state champion meeting. Women's pole vault, we have Savannah Morgan took first champion, and Annie Leinberger, second, runner-up, and Holly Foley made third medal. Will Dotson and Elliot Johnson won the men's tennis doubles state championship, both are seniors, and the Fairhope softball plays Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday in Montgomery at the state tournament to defend their state championship. I'm not sure what happened to the picture, but our first semi-pro football game will be held on May 25th, and we'll send out notices on all the details, probably this week or In public works, we've broken it down into their different departments. Streets, all capital purchases made for 2019 budget. Operating expenses need to break down overtime, this is for 2020, and figure out how much is being spent in special projects. We are now detailing overtime more accurately so those line items can be forecasted better in future budgets. And they estimate that it's probably taking up 80 to 85 percent of the overtime. We'll break out, let's see, and also the public works medical expenses in the streets department, they'll need to increase over the next year. When we started dividing up all of the expenses among the departments so we could really do better with our budget in each department, there's a lot of fine tuning that happens after that. You do it, and then every year, you do a little bit more detail so it's more accurate, and we're still doing that. Personnel for streets, all have been filled. Overall, actual to budget expenses are at 60 percent. Again, a lot of projects are being done, so that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to be over budget by the end of the year. In the streets department, this isn't a budget item, but I'm trying to do my mayor report, and with this, George Ladd, our street supervisor, welcomed a baby girl on May 10th, Lola Eleanor Ladd, six pounds, 12 ounces. So, it's just a few days ago. Facilities maintenance, the capital, one of them's on tonight's agenda, and then there'll just be one remaining item by the end of the fiscal year. Operating expenses, nothing major stands out, looks good as of the six-month snapshot. Personnel, all have been filled. Overall, actual to budget expenses are at 40 percent. That's different than what I have. Hold on. Maybe it's down here. Here we go. Sanitation, capital, we have one 2018 budgeted trash truck and one 2019 budgeted, what it says, two trash trucks. I guess 2018 and 2019, there you go. And they're expected to be here summer of 2019, so just in a few months. Personnel, all budgeted items, personnel positions have been filled. Actual budget, they're at 47 percent of expense. Fleet maintenance, capital remaining, two items expected to be here by the end of the year, and all of their positions have been filled. Overall, actual is 42 percent budget. Capital projects that will happen this fiscal year and be completed are the Rock Creek stabilization, the drainage improvements, the marina seawall, library repairs, North Beach restrooms, dredging of Fly Creek is almost completed. Projects expected to partially roll over into 2020 is part of the tap grant for Manley and the sidewalks, and County Road 13 plans have been approved and moving forward, and the roundabout, there might be a portion of that that goes into 2020, the roundabout at 104 and section. Okay, overall city snapshot for the six-month is expenses 49 percent and the revenue is 51 percent. Our cash balances, and this includes restricted and unrestricted just cash balances for the city, is $21,706,000. And the city will be paid in full for their debt June 1st, and I do plan on having a party. We're open to suggestions. Now, to go into the utility six-month review, we're going to break down gas, electric, water, sewer departments very quickly. The gas department, there's a few capital items that still need to be purchased, and they'll all be done within this fiscal year, we think. The pressure reading charts, only two instead of four remaining, $11,000 will be put towards, afford 550, $80,000 for lowering four two-inch gas mains will be used for DOT compliance for the system, $200,000 for lowering two six-inch gas mains on Highway 31, and Volkert is looking at it right now. May need to budget more in 2020 to complete this. $100,000 for the meter replacement, 5 percent of the system will be used in 2019 budget, but more will be needed for 2020 budget. Gas operating expenses, professional services, still have Magnolia River modeling gas system for about 70,000. This project will go into 2020 budget as well. Personnel, all have been filled, and will need to pay a little overtime due to compliance issues with gas. Now, these compliance issues in our gas lines have been, they've been asking, you know, that they need to have a certain amount done every year, and that just has not been done. And now, we are kind of in reactionary mode to catch up with all that. We are doing that overtime internally. The actual overall budget, revenue 70 percent and expenses are at 55. For the electric department, the capital, $300,000 budgeted for the Magnolia Avenue distribution conversion will not materialize in 2019, will be requested in 2020 budget, so that will roll over. $100,000 in pole replacement may need to carry over some of this due to the amount of time it's needed to do the inspections and that time constraint. 1.2 million for two power transformers at Twin Beach will be delivered in September. This is about a, this is part of the five-year plan, so whether or not that will be paid for by the end of this fiscal year, but it's in the budget. Operating expenses, they look good and under budget for the six-month mark. Personnel, all budgeted, new positions have been filled. One open position due to promotion is in progress. Overall, revenues at 47 percent, expenses at 38. Water and sewer, water, all remaining capital expenditures have been implemented, and anything left will be done by the end of the year. Operating expenses, they look good and under budget. Personnel, all budgeted, positions filled. Actual revenues and expenses were at 49 percent for revenue, and expenses are coming in lower at 32 percent. Our utilities department is getting a number of calls requesting tree trimming, and we want our citizens to know that we are taking their requests and prioritizing. want our citizens to know that we are taking their requests and prioritizing. First, we must trim the trees growing into the, growing into the trees as they represent a serious hazard, and when that task is completed, we will start the working on the request from the citizens. So we are a little behind on that. Overall, utility six-month snapshot, for the six-month expenses, we're at forty-two percent, revenue is at fifty-one percent. The total debt for utility is fifteen million, three-hundred-and-eight thousand roughly, and the cash balances, again, restricted and unrestricted, total twenty, almost twenty-eight And then this is it for overall city and utility, just putting this here because, to show that the restricted and unrestricted cash is around fifty million, and now that we do have a new treasurer, we're going to work with her to cash flow the five-year plan for utility and having it all upgraded over the next five years. Like with the state of the city that I put together a booklet for, the airport authority is not a part of the city, it's its own entity, and I did not include it in this report because I need to get that from the airport authority. I'd just recommend council president maybe do that one. Projects for economic and community development, we have a lot going on, and economic and community development has its hands in every department when it comes to grants. We have a ton in the works right now in a lot of the projects. We need manpower in this department, and with a director leaving, I do want to have a new structured way of doing this department for the next eighteen months so we can push forward all of these projects and have a little bit more hands-on deck to get these accomplished. Sherri Lee, our economic and community development director, I don't know that she sleeps, so we're going to have to have two people. But I'm discussing that during the next, hopefully, council work session. I did, I was able to get the restructure of the planning department on tonight's agenda, but as the fastest-growing city in the state, this is one of the most important departments that we need to make sure that we not only staff well for the things that are coming in, I kind of, you know, those are order-taking types of positions, we have to have that proactive team that is able to push forward all of the new changes we want to make and the comprehensive land use plan that will start this year. I mean, this is going to take a lot of time, and currently, the people working on it are the same people who are very busy taking in, you know, all of the, all of the projects that are happening right now. So what I recommended, our current planning department is on the left, and with the, what we offered the planning director before Wayne left is changing this up. Again, it's on tonight's agenda, but I'm explaining it, and while we have this, basically bringing in, promoting someone to manager, we're going to have two managers instead of a director. So promoting one manager from within, hiring a manager that focuses on strategic long-term planning, and we could also promote a person to a city planner, add additional city planner, and a new planning tech, and that's, you know, a lot. It's basically three new positions and two promotions, and all of this is for about a little more than twenty thousand dollars net increase, and I think this is a very good plan. Okay. Not sure what happened there, but it was a picture of a team from Baldwin Leadership. I'd like to recognize Gail Fogarty, my talented administrator assistant, who recently graduated from the 2019 class of leadership Baldwin County. This program is designed to identify and unite current and potential leaders to address issues from a county-wide perspective, and offers members a broad range of experiences and insights. The project, all of the group, there's several groups within that class that put together projects for different things, and her group put together a project to fund all seven of the educational foundations in Baldwin County. I thought they put together a really interesting fundraiser. The project they chose was clay shooting tournament, and the name of it was the Clays for A's. It was held on March 15th, and they raised eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars to be distributed over those schools, so I thank her for her service. I don't think there's anything else here. Nope, miscellaneous items. I have appointed or selected someone to appoint for the replacement of a personnel board member that had to leave due to health reasons. I've forwarded it to the personnel board because I like to meet with the person and also make their recommendation, and hopefully we'll have this on the agenda for approval next council meeting. Tomorrow's graduation day, yes, it is that time of year. Graduation ceremonies will be held in the stadium, and right now, the weather looks good, so hopefully that will work out. The NICS Center, always looking for ways to better serve our citizens, senior citizens, is establishing a new program. They're calling it, the working title is Rent a Teenager, but they're partnering with Fairhope High School students will volunteer their time and technical skills to help our NICS members with their smartphones, iPads, computers, all the things digitally that are confusing to even me, and the only ones I think it's not confusing to are our teenagers. Our NICS Center members are really excited about the program, and we thank the students for taking the time to bring our seniors into the light. So, thank you so much. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Wilson, and Mayor Wilson, I did, I moved that to the, to the council agenda only because I knew you would have no time limit on you, and though you wanted to keep it short, I appreciate that, but the work session, as you can see, was so-
Everybody would hate me if I spent thirty minutes-
Well, the work session was so busy, we couldn't squeeze it in, but I knew that we had an open-ended time on this and that people didn't mind staying until ten or twelve, so I put it here.
I wasn't going to do that.
All right. Item five on tonight's agenda is public participation on agenda items only. If you wish to speak to items seven through twenty-eight, if you'll come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, remember that there would be another opportunity, opportunity for you to speak in public participation, and item twenty-nine for non-agenda items. So if you'd like to speak to items seven through twenty-eight, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. See, and no one, I will close public participation and move to council comments. Councilman Conyers?
Yeah, for my comments tonight, I prepared a little spreadsheet I passed out to my fellow council members and to the mayor. Mayor's done a real good job, I think, of cleaning up the, cleaning up the books, if you will. There were some intermingled or commingled expenses and items within the utilities and then the city expenses, and she's done a good job, I think, of breaking those out, but in breaking those out, you can kind of get lost in the shuffle of, you know, did the city have a deficit? Did the utilities make money? So I try to look at it just for simplification. I put five years' worth, pulled them from the, from the city's website, and I didn't get into, you know, what was transferred here, what was paid out of the utilities that really belonged to the city. I just took the utility revenue, the city revenue, added them together for a combined revenue, took the utility expenses as listed, and the city expenses as listed, and I figured whether they were allocated correctly or not, if you added them together, everything should have been expensed to one or the other, and so it kind of gives you an idea of where we are from a combined revenue or a combined expense perspective. And I did that just because I look at the city of Fairhope and the city of Fairhope Utilities, it's almost like a marriage. I mean, we're in this thing together, we own a hundred percent of the utilities, so, you know, things should be allocated properly, but if they're not, at the end of the day, it's all coming out of the same bucket ultimately, but it, I do appreciate the job you've done in getting this all cleaned up and allocated. And I think that, you know, the main point, I wanted to, I guess, piggyback on what the mayor said, you know, in June will be debt-free as a city, you know, the utilities will still have some debt, and I think that's a, that's a group accomplishment. I think the council, I think the mayor, I think the previous council, certainly a lot of what we've been paying off was, was just debt that's been in an amortizing basis, so we can't take credit for all that, and then, of course, the employees deserve credit for that. So I agree that, you know, we ought to have some kind of celebration when we make that final, final payment and are officially debt-free as a city, but I just wanted to put this together for everyone to see on paper what I see when I look at the, the city finances, and so it looks like revenue has been increasing, we've been, we've been beneficiaries of a strong economy. Expenses have gone up, and I think that's mostly because we've been tackling some pretty large-scale infrastructure projects, but if you look at the, the combined surplus, if you will, it's been pretty steady across the board, and, you know, I may be missing something there, but that's just a real basic overview of the, of the combined financial-
I'd like to clarify a few things.
Please.
Before, you know, 2017, which is when we separated utilities from the city, what these transfers don't include are the operating expenses the utilities paid. So if the utilities pay city operating expenses, what happens there is you're not getting a true picture of where the city was financially, and when you add that, in 2015, you had four, almost four-point-three million dollars, the utilities paid, and in 2016, it was five-point-seven-four million.
But if you can, but wouldn't that be added in the-
We don't combine. We don't want to combine because they're two separate entities.
Right, but there's, it's the only, it's the only way you can compare the prior years where the allocation may have been incorrect to the current years.
You would have to add, though, with expenses for the city, you would have to add the expenses that the utility had into the expenses for the city so you could see why and how much the city had a deficit. If you just do everything together, we're still doing better, but it's just, we have to use all the, as many, as the profits from the utility to pay for infrastructure, and the way we had it before, using it as a combined account for everything, that was why we weren't able to invest in all of the infrastructure that we're able to now. And paying off debt before and paying off debt now is different because look at all that we've done. We've done more investment into our infrastructure in every single department, hired people, I mean, it's, the list goes on and on. You can't do that and be able to pay off debt at the same, that's what is remarkable about where we are right now, is that we're doing all these things, we haven't borrowed a dime for it, and we're still able to sustain paying the city off. That is what is different from last year because there was nothing invested.
Well, and this is, I mean, all this is, it's the only way I could think of to get a comparison from prior years when things were not necessarily allocated in the correct bucket. It still gives you an overall, this is the total amount of money that came in between the city and the utilities, and this is the total amount of expenses between the city and utilities.
But it's not, it's the total amount of expenses, but the expenses were not being done correctly.
And I'm agreeing with you on that.
I can just add to that, so you can see, if y'all want to see it that way, I can add the other lines that would need to be included.
I just needed to see it that way so that I could see what the overall trend was, but I agree with you on the clearing up the allocations, and, but that's why you can't take 2019 and compare it to 2015 because it doesn't compare.
That's why when I did the comparison, I compared it apples to apples.
All right. I just, that was all.
Thank you, Jenny. Councilman Brown?
Yeah, I would like to thank the Fairhope Rotary for a fantastic state cook-off Friday night. It was a, it looked like it was a well-attended event, and a good time was had by all. Appreciate Councilman Conyers doing this little spreadsheet and looking at those numbers. The city is doing fantastic financially. I'd like to see some more aggressive approach to some of the sewer issues.
It's all in the plan. It wasn't, it didn't exist before, and ten million dollars of it, eleven million dollars of it is not going to be, have to be paid by citizens because we got it from BP.
That's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Boone?
Yeah, I again would like to emphasize what a nice time we had at the state cook-off with the Rotary Club. One thing I would like to emphasize is the money goes towards a very good project for the city of Fairhope, and I had, last year had a real personal interest in this, and the Rotary Club donated seventy-eight percent, or a little over seventy-eight percent of the money needed for my daughter's playground equipment for the Fairhope Intermediate Special Education Program playground equipment that they needed to build, and it was a very good boost towards getting this equipment, which is now installed at the school. So when everybody thinks about if they ought to go or not go, the money really goes towards great projects for the city of Fairhope, and it was a very well-run, well-done thing. And, of course, I didn't win anything, but my counterpart here on the right, he won one of the contests on a very good stake. So anyway, I highly suggest everyone come in and support this, these type of events. That's it.
People's Choice Award is what Councilman Brown won, which is, which is the big trophy, which is probably the most prestigious award at the state cook-off, so congratulations to Chive Talking and, that's Councilman Brown's wife's business, so congratulate her and Robert and their business partners as well in winning that. I don't have a report tonight, but I would like to invite Mr. Zach Hood with Baldwin County EDA to come forward. He would like to make us aware of something that's going on down in Orange Beach concerning disaster preparedness.
Mr. Burrell, thank you. I'm Zach Hood, I'm the Emergency Management Agency Director for Baldwin County, Alabama, and I'm here tonight not to really take much of your time, I just want to make you aware as the elected officials of Fairhope and as the mayor that we are having the elected officials briefing at the Emergency Preparedness Expo, which will be May 15th. You will see on the flyer, the expo's from nine to five, it's free to the public, so I'd like to see all of it there. It's nine to five, but the elected officials briefing specifically is one-thirty to three. So, so what's in this for you? It's, it's the leadership from the Alabama State Emergency Management Agency, and it's actually our weather partners from the National Weather Service in Mobile. And so what they do is we sit down and we discuss from, from start to finish tropical weather events, and then the response part of responding to tropical weather, which, you know, in our beautiful areas, it's, it's, you know, more of not, it's more of not if, it's when, so we always have to practice preparedness. Preparedness is a culture, and I'd like to assist the city in establishing a culture of preparedness as it relates to tropical weather. So I'll leave some flowers, some flyers in the back, if that's okay, and it's free. One-thirty to three is the elected officials briefing, nine to five is, is for the public, sixty, about sixty, just over sixty vendors, and it's completely free, and it's a resource where we all can link together. I'd also like to thank John Saraceno for working with me through the National Hurricane Conference on, on trying to get you involved and things he's been doing, and I look forward to working with the city. My wife and I have made our house, our home is here in Fairhope, and look forward to moving forward, and thank you again, Mr. Burrell.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Appreciate you being here. Okay, with that, I'll close council comments. We will move to item seven, which is an ordinance to amend, ordinance number 1537, known as the signed ordinance, chapter 18.5, signs, section 18.5 dash three, signed permits and exceptions, specifically B-10 regarding temporary off-site directional signs. Council members, this was discussed at the, at a recent work session, and staff went back and made some recommendations as to what beautification areas should be defined in disallowing the temporary off-site directional signs. If you look at the first page under that tab, you'll see section one, B-10. If you look at items one through six, I'm sorry, one through seven, and then you can home in also on six A beautification areas, I believe that is how these were asked to be defined by the staff with items one through seven, implementing components from our discussions at the most recent work session where it was submitted. So may I ask someone to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Boone. All right. Does anybody have any questions about- Does anybody have any questions about this at all? If not, we'll let this lie over for final adoption, and you can gather your thoughts and look at this and ask questions prior to voting on this at the next council meeting. I see, I see one member of the Baldwin County Association of Realtors that's been instrumental, they've been instrumental in helping us make these changes, and they want to be in compliance, and they want to be good stewards of our city as well. So, Jennifer Faust, who's Governmental Affairs Director for Baldwin Realtors, we appreciate you being here, appreciate all the help that you've given us in, in moving this along. Moving to item eight. Item eight is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to inform and submit the municipal water pollution prevention program report for 2018 to the Department of Environmental Manager. Management, I'm sorry, I'll entertain a motion to submit this report.
So moved.
Say it.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number nine is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute the supplemental agreement number two, the contract number 89-00-1501-1028 between the city of Fairhope and the Southeastern Power Administration. This has to do with, and Mr. Peterson, would you like to discuss this? Basically, what we're doing is we're going to be adding some hydroelectric power. It allows for cheaper energy. It, it cannot increase our cost, because of the components of this energy will always be cheaper than our existing purchase power agreements. And Lisa, you're shaking your head. Am I getting all this right? I've confirmed that this is correct, and all of the member cities of AMEA are passing similar resolutions. So, it's just allowing us to purchase more power through the hydroelectric plants. Does anybody have any questions about that for Mr. Peterson, or even Ms. Miller, who's Public Relations Director? We'll put her on the spot.
Sorry, I didn't hear you say anything on Mr. Peterson.
Yeah. Okay. Any, any questions for Mr. Peterson, or me? Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to execute the supplemental agreement, number two. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Item 10 is a resolution that the city council, on behalf of the city of Fairhope, does hereby voice its formal opposition to Senate Bill 264 currently pending before the Alabama Legislature, which unduly benefits the wireless industry at the expense of the residents of Fairhope's ability to manage its rights of way at the local governance level. And council, as I pointed out in the work session, if this state bill was to pass, it would take away local control of the small cell towers. And I know that we are trying to craft some local legislation in regards to these right now, and if this was to pass in Montgomery, it would just take all authority away from us to regulate those. I have spoken to Senator Elliott, and he had voiced his opposition, and he said that he would oppose that. And also, I've spoken to Representative Faust, and I, while he didn't concretely say that he was going to oppose that, he said that he heard me, and I, I had the feeling that he would, but I won't speak for him. Any questions? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Item 11 is a resolution to compensation and job classification plan, along with grade order sheet be amended and approved to reclassify the ground man job position, grade 18 to alignment of printage, grade 20, and amend the budget for the same in the electric department. I believe Mike, with the electric department, brought this to our attention in the last work session, and we had all agreed to place this on tonight's agenda for furthering this along and making this change. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to change the job classification plan.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 12 is a resolution that city council hereby approves and amends the rules and regulations for the Fairhope docks regarding commercial fishing vessels and commercial fishermen as presented in the attachment. Also, as discussed in the work session, I believe I gave a quick synopsis of this. We found that in reviewing the rules and regulations and thinking about our franchise agreements, that in fact, if a commercial fisherman wanted to sell their products off their boat in a slip, that they're already renting from the city, that they'd be allowed to do so. Were there any, those were the only changes to these rules and regulations at this time.
I would like to clarify, too, that if you're going to be a commercial fisherman, you have to have a license.
Correct. And you also have to have a business license to sell your product from your, from your boat. Any questions for Ms. Mazer, or for me? Okay, appreciate you working on that. Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve and amend the rules and regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 13 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number two, a bid number 12-17, citywide elevator maintenance, 2017, with Mallory Elevator Company of Florida, for an additional one year, as per the terms and conditions in the original contract, at a cost of $450 per month. I see our maintenance supervisor here. If anybody has any questions for him, I'm sure he'll be happy to answer them. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the execution of this contract extension.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 14 is a resolution that certain items are declared surplus, and the mayor and staff are hereby authorized and directed to dispose of personal property owned by the city of Fairhope by one of the following methods: to receive bids for such property via gov deals sold to the highest bidder, provided the city council so have the authority to reject all bids when its opinion deems the bids to be less than adequate consideration for the personal property; or two, sold for scrap or recycle at the highest offered value; or three, disposal via a landfill; or four, some donated to another municipality, they could use the items. So if you would like to, there should be a list of these items in our tab 14. Looks like a lot of electronic devices, Motorola devices, and Aruba devices. Anybody have any questions about those items? I trust that they are declaring any surplus, in good faith, so I'll entertain a motion to declare these items surplus and be disposed of in one of those four methods described.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 15 is a resolution to award a bid for wood pole inspection services. This was the rebid for the electric department to Osmos Utility Services Incorporated, with a cost not to exceed $60,320. Anybody like that further to explain? I believe we rebid it, and it looks like we're $2,680 on the budget now.
I'm so moved that we.
Have a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
A motion and a second. Okay. Hard to award the bid. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Item 16 is a resolution that city of Fairhope vote to purchase two 2019 Ford F-250 Supercab four-by-two pickups, model X2A, for the building maintenance department. The type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department. A purchasing bid list, therefore, does not have to be let out for bid, with a total cost of $53,700. Can somebody tell me if we're on budget or under budget?
Under, but 24.
Man, pretty good. Did you do all that?
I was.
Did you work that deal? All right. I'll entertain a motion for the purchase of those pickups, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the purchase of the two pickups. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 17 is a resolution that city of Fairhope vote to purchase seven three-phase pad mount transformers for the electric department's inventory, and authorizes procurement without formal bid, based on the option allowed by Code of Alabama, section 41-16-51B7, at a cost of $69,615. So, these transformers are needed for inventory, council. So, I will entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the purchase of the seven transformers. Any further discussion? I guess I would ask, are these going into the new substations, Richard? Are these just to replace just blown-out transformers, the old inefficient?
And have spare on the yard, we live in one, now being on the project.
Cost of doing business, right?
Yes.
Okay. Where am I at, clerk? Do I have a motion and a second? I think I do, because I asked for discussion. Okay, all right. All right, without any further discussion, I'll ask council, if you're in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 18 is a resolution that city of Fairhope vote to purchase 40 45-foot Class II wood poles and 20 30-foot Class IV wood poles for the electric department's inventory, and authorize procurement without formal bid, based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama, at a cost of $16,181.20. I'll assume more maintenance needs, council, and entertain a motion to purchase these poles.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 19 is a resolution that city of Fairhope approves the procurement of Neptune water meters from the water department from Consolidated Pipe and Supply, a sole-source provider from Neptune Technology Group. The number of units is 865 8/3" meters. It's $175 per unit, and 41-inch meters is two, at $275 per unit, with a cost not to exceed $161,500, and authorizes procurement without formal bid, based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. This increase in our water meter, we're growing a, growing city, council, so I'll entertain a motion to purchase these meters.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 20 is a resolution that city of Fairhope vote to purchase three in-car and 14 body camera systems, one transfer station with applicable accessories and warranties for the Fairhope Police Department from WatchGuard Incorporated. The vendor is the exclusive and sole-source manufacturer for this equipment. The system is available, available for procurement without formal bidding, provided by the Code of Alabama, and you can see that section, at a cost of $32,375. I believe this was prior budgeted, and this turns out just under $125. So I'll entertain a motion for these purchases.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 21 is a resolution that city of Fairhope vote to purchase a three-year agreement with Threat Advice LLC, a subsidiary company of NXT Soft, for the education and training awareness of cybersecurity threats for the IT department, and the system is available for procurement without formal bidding, provided by the Code of Alabama, due to having a direct impact upon our security system, the safety of our persons and infrastructure, at a cost of $300 per month for 36 months, plus a one-time setup fee of $250 for a total three-year agreement being $11,050. Would anybody like Jeff to come in and explain this?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve as presented?
Okay, have a motion to purchase these agreements and install as presented. You have a second?
Second.
We have a second. I was told by some employees that this was a very good deal, and that we have a real need to pay attention to these threats, and $300 per month for security training, pretty good, pretty, pretty good deal. See clerk shaking her head. Is that right, clerk?
That's correct.
Are you all over that?
Yes.
Okay. You don't own Threat Advice, though, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the purchase of the agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 22 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope vote to procure five duct heaters and controls in the remaining three HVAC units, and the installation for the NIC Center, and the equipment is available for direct procurement through the U.S. Commodities Cooperative contract. Therefore, it does not have to be let out for bid. What that means is it's already been bid nationally through the U.S. Communities Bid Process, at a total cost of $49,595. And Lance, I see you in the back of the room, and I just, I want to ask, is this, is this going to be it for the NIC Center, or are we going to be good to go?
It seems like that's going to be it, it's going to hurt us.
Oh. Will this bring everything into where you would like it?
It's bringing us to the 20th century.
Okay.
Is this the 20th?
We're in the 21st, though.
I think that does sound. Or the 21st century.
You know, last year, we added the, the new units, the outside units. We added the outside.
You got all the ducts and all those things that are supposed to work together and get the air flowing right?
We still had four more systems that we haven't touched. The duct heaters, which are inside the duct, on each one of these were completely burnt out. We limped through the, you know, the winter long, just trying to make it. Coming with the duct heaters are controls that are attached to the front-end user, computer, that we added to make everything talk to one another, to make it more efficient. So, that's in, that's in that $49,000 as well. So, once we get through with that, you know, unless we have a major condensing unit on something outside, other than what we just replaced, and they're just small, we can handle all that ourselves. So, we should hopefully be done with that.
Excellent.
Other than a roof coming pretty soon.
Any questions for Mr. Cavanaugh, council? We'll point out, it, it comes out about $10,000 over budget, but it's, I think it's just one of those things, that you just, you know, you own buildings, you got to maintain them, right? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to procure these heaters and controls.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, council. Item 23 is a resolution that city council approves the selection of the Government and Economic Development Institute with Auburn University for professional consulting services for the first phase of the Auburn Personnel System Project, which includes updating all job descriptions, grades, and making them compliant with federal law and more, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $60,000. Who will we address questions to on this? This is part, we didn't get through the agenda meeting. Is there someone we can ask questions? Leslie, can you answer these? It says that we're going to, you know, make them compliant with federal law and more. I mean, are we aware that we have job descriptions that aren't compliant with federal law now?
Well, since, since I started, whenever we, whenever we go to post a job, whenever we're about to post a job, I go through it and I rewrite it and everything that way. We have many of ours that I've done that are compliant. We have some that are not, because those jobs have not been open at this time. The easiest way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time, which is why I still have other work to do, so I do go back and, and get them while I can. So, but yeah, we have many job descriptions that are very, very rough.
Okay, I guess, since you're on the discussion of job descriptions, I guess I, I ask if, if people, and I have no doubt that Auburn has, you know, a lot of fine people, but when they come to the City of Fairhope, how can they make a determination of what we want our personnel, what duties we want our personnel to perform?
They don't recommend.
They're not recommending the duties they perform. We're updating it through the departments to show what they're really doing. They're, and they just want to make sure that the grade for what they're doing is appropriate. I mean, the, the comp salary study is supposed to be done every four years, and we've had it on every last three budgets, but for reasons that we didn't want to move forward. The first year was because we were really behind on being able to do the work that would go in, on our end, to go into doing it right. The second year, that was in two thousand and eighteen budget, I explained that I would rather look at this in the sense where we're not just taking care of the job descriptions and the pay grades, but also the structure of the departments to make sure, okay, if they do, if they go to that level, we're not only determining what we have and making sure those grades are right, but also figuring out what we may be missing, how we can consolidate positions, and this is all done through city employees and their directors, through council, me, and citizens. So it's a very open, transparent process. And the way that I would like to lay this out, because I too was sticker shot, the first time I saw it was with y'all. So it's an eighteen-month project, and I felt that we could, if we did what's already in the budget now for the comp study, and I believe they quoted fifty-seven thousand something, so that's why I said not to exceed, we can accomplish over the next six months or so, that first part of it, knowing that if we can put in the structure and the other components, we could make it so it's a two thousand, we already have in the budget for two thousand and nineteen, sixty thousand, and twenty-twenty allocating an amount which they can get with us and say what they could accomplish that next year, and then in twenty-twenty-one, whatever's left. So it would be over three fiscal years.
Can you, I don't know, mayor, if you, I mean, put you on the spot, because you weren't, you weren't here, and I don't recall, and the last personnel study that, that we paid for, and we've had, you know, just some stopgap measures that the Personnel Board has performed for us, but, and the last study, if my recollection is right, and I don't, I don't recall the, the consulting services that did it, but I want to say it was about thirty-five thousand dollars. I mean, did you, I mean, do you know what the difference in the two?
I think that, and I'm not sure if.
I don't know if there's any, I don't know if we have anybody left that can answer that question.
I know it was Evergreen was, was the group that did it.
Right.
And they're, you know, they're an okay group. Compared to the Auburn group is, is much different, because they do a lot, they do the study, they do a whole job analysis, they look at the whole department, they take a very large picture view of, of the whole organization.
And what they did too, I mean, we, we started from not having anything, so we've come a long way, and they put something in place where at least there were grades, because there was no rhyme or reason for anything, you know? So it's good, what they accomplished. But the reality is, is the job descriptions were still not consistent, and they weren't accurate, because what really needs to happen is there needs to be clear, you know, experience needed and education. And then, as far as going through the details of the whole job description, there, there needs, they said we have like two hundred job descriptions, don't quote me on this, because it's in my notes somewhere, but two hundred job descriptions, and we really only need like a hundred and twenty-five. So there is an element that we can simplify these, so the job duties are based on where we are today and what we need. It's just like in public works, they're more simplified, they have, okay, this is a worker one, worker two, worker three. And of course, you need to be more specific as the experience and that job, you know, gets higher up the charts, because you want to be a lot more accurate with those salaries. But that was not accomplished through that study. It wasn't, and they, and not, not only that, but they're not federally compliant. And that's, and it's been six years. So that's why we're, we're doing it, I feel like this is a better way of doing it, it's going to get us where we, we need, and then continue to do, if we have open positions, and it's a new position, to do it in this consistent way. It's just very important.
I don't, I don't have any doubts that there's some needs, I just, you know, if Evergreen had, maybe, if that's the name of the company, if they'd been given the opportunity to say do a phase two, to add on to what they did with the pay grades that they established, and, and I don't know that they called it a phase one, but I'll call it a phase one, you know, could we have done it, you know, more, more efficiently? I just had sticker shock over, had sticker shock over this.
Auburn's going to give us, if they were to do the same scope of work, because it is two totally different scopes, they would have been a lot more expensive. And Auburn and universities typically are less expensive than, you know, regular professional experience. So again, I don't know, and I've searched in lots of different places, since, again, this has been on, in the budget for three years, I have not found a better source that has the experience. All they do is government studies, you know, municipal and county and things like that. I know they went over a little bit during the work session, but I've been talking to them for a while now, and it's just, it's very complex to get it right.
All right, I appreciate all the time explaining that. Counsel, I'll, any comments before I entertain a motion?
Yeah, I think we all had, you know, sticker shock when they made their presentation at the work session, and I'm a little confused when we say the job descriptions aren't accurate as to what they're, what the personnel are doing.
They're absolutely not. Not just a little bit either, a lot. I mean, you can ask the employees, I mean, it's just, they're not doing what, I don't know that there's hardly any, I mean, you'd have to have the directors chime in too. They absolutely, every time we have an opening, that's our opportunity to really make it right, but there are other complacency things that we haven't been doing that has to happen too, and those are things that can cost us a lot of money, I mean, if we're sued, so.
I'd like to have some, you know, a meeting before, before I vote on that, but.
And again, this has been approved in the budget the last three years for this amount, so.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Before we let this fail, can we, would anybody want to entertain a motion to table this?
I would like to make a motion to table this. I'd like to, there's some other companies I think that we perhaps could get a better price with, and there's no doubt it needs to be done, it's just the function, I think this is a little high for, for what we're going to get.
They're doing it for the amount that we approved in the budget.
Now, I understand that. I understand it's approved in the budget, but it still just seems a little high. And I would like to table this to get a little more research done on it, which I think we can do between now and the next meeting, and have it, have this concluded at the next meeting. So I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to table it.
I have a motion to table, do I have a second?
And before we vote on that, has the Personnel Board been involved in this process?
Well, they, they absolutely, the same board members are not there anymore, but the ones that are still currently know that we need to do this, because they're the ones that kind of started the process to begin with, and they also know that where we are with our job descriptions, like I said, it was a start, and it was a big, huge step in the right direction, but there's so much that needs to be done to get it right. And, I mean, if you want, you can, can ask them, but they've also known that we've, that we've needed to do it, how much it was going to be, and I've communicated with them a lot. I totally agree it needs to be done.
There's no doubt that it needs to be done. It's just, again, I think this is.
How much cheaper can we get it done? I mean, if it's thirty-five, when we had it done through Evergreen.
It wasn't thirty-five. It was closer to sixty, I think, but we can find that out too, just honestly.
Actually, Evergreen's bid in two thousand and twelve was under thirty.
Well, there was one that was an update, and there was one that was the first one, and so one of them is not, was not the full comprehensive study.
No, it was not.
Let's wait till we get to discussion. We have a motion in a, I'm waiting on a second to table.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a, and a second to table, now discussion.
I don't think we're going to wind up with anything different. We're going to table it, come back, and it's probably going to be the same amount. And we'll probably move forward with it, but.
Any other comments, questions? All right, we have a motion in a second to table this resolution. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, that's tabled. Item twenty-four is a resolution, the Compensation and Job Classification Plan, along with the Grade Order Sheet, be amended and approved to add the job positions of Planning and Zoning Manager and Development Services Manager, and the job descriptions and grades are paid for the same, and amend the budget to fund these positions and to defund the position of Director of Planning. If you'll see in your tab in item twenty-four, council, I believe that all of us have met with the mayor about these positions and discussed the job descriptions and responsibilities to which we hope that they'll adhere, and should be of no surprise to anyone. Do you have any questions before I ask for a motion? Okay, I believe that all of us had agreed to this in principle, so I'll ask for a motion to edit the Compensation and Job Classification Plan and the Grade Order Sheet to amend those positions.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item number twenty-five is a nominee for the County Board of Equalization. Did anyone come up with a nominee? I just want to keep that at the forefront of everyone's attention. Council members, mayor, if you have a nominee, if you'll please bring that forward, we just, we need to get that, I probably should have pulled that, because I didn't see one on there, but I wanted to get it on there in case sometime between now and the time that they last asked for it, we would have a good nominee. Okay, we'll move on. Item twenty-six is an appointment to the Pedestrian and Bicycle Committee. The nominees are Rosalie Strom and William Bill Hall. This would be nominations for a three-year term. Term shall end May of two thousand and twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion for these appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for the appointments. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item twenty-seven is Industrial Development Board Appointments. The nominees for a six-year term are Mr. Ryan Baker and Mr. Richard Johnson.
Different Richard Johnson.
I have no idea.
So anyway, anybody have any questions about those?
I'll tell you stuff.
Okay, I'll entertain.
So moved.
A motion to appoint these nominees.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, those appointments are made, thank you, council. Item twenty-eight is a request of Mark Pelucci, the Treasurer and Firefighter with the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department, requesting permission to use the James P. NIC Center for the Wives' Dinner on November the second, two thousand and nineteen, from five p.m. to twelve a.m. It's a thank you to all of the firefighters, significant others, for putting up with the worries while they're outrunning calls, supporting our great city. Boy, Pelucci must have wrote this. The request is for the City Council to waive the fee for using the James P. NIC Center. And I assume, chief, you're probably going to come back after you get a application.
Yes, sir.
Input for the serving of adult beverages?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so this would just be for the use of the NIC Center.
That's correct, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of granting the request, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, permission granted.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next item is public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, you'll be given three minutes if you'll come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Dr. Lou Campanosi, President of the Common Sense Campaign, one nine one five zero, Fairfax Drive, Fairhope, Alabama. Last summer, when we heard about Spanish Fort going forward with using the special tax district to raise, raise property taxes for a plus-up in the school budget, I called David Connor, asked him about it, he's County Commission lawyer. David basically said his understanding of it was that it was an incorrect usage of the law, okay? That the intent was not to use the special district tax law to go forward in areas that weren't blighted. Well, here we are now, where Spanish Fort is moving forward, you all are moving forward, and I did talk to the mayor of Spanish Fort last week when we, we met at the ALDOT meeting that they had in Spanish Fort. I asked him about this, and his basic take on this was that he was very concerned that he could not get a guarantee from the school board that the funds that they might raise, if they go forward with this, would not be cut in terms of the budget for the Spanish Fort school system. In other words, their whole idea is to have a plus-up. If they're going to have a budget cut, then there's no reason to have a plus-up. It's the same problem that you had in Louisiana when we were living there, and they wanted to have the lottery to get money for the tax, for the, for the schools. That never happened. The first thing they did was to cut the school budget, or, they never used it that way. So my question to you all is, do you have a guarantee as to whether or not this Board of Education, you can trust them, if it's not contractual, to actually let you use this money, aside from the fact that I really question the whole usage of it, okay? But the point is, given where we are with taxes already, you've got that wonderful gas tax that they never said anything about, not only does that go in in September, when I understand you all are going to be, you know, voting on this, but you also have this whole business with ALDOT, which we're all in the process of trying to fight this tolling business, which is going to have a direct impact, those who live here and work in Mobile. So the question that you have to, I would argue, going forward, is to think carefully about, are you really gaining a whole lot on this proposition? Aside from the fact that the school board is flushed with money, has been flushed with money, because they surreptitiously got the County Commission to pass a one-cent sales tax, when you all and I know that we should have had a vote on the two thousand and seventeen penny tax raising? Okay, that never happened, because they do not trust the public to not, you know, to vote with them. But the reason they don't trust the public is because of what happened in two thousand and fifteen. Now you say, okay, well, you're just living in the past. No, we're not living in the past. Kevin Cochran had a deal with us to have, if we voted to, if we came out to support their, the renewals on the two thousand and sixteen taxes, that they would, you know, give us what we have been asking for, which is a, an audit of what happened. No one can sit here and say that Dr. Lee knew what he was doing with twenty, fifty million dollars for the digital renaissance. And that may be old business to you all, but it's not old business to us. There were issues with the task force, when they, their, their, not the, the Finance Committee that they had together, had some very real questions that were never answered. You could talk to Chris Hadley about it, these are real issues as far as we're concerned. So the credibility question with the school board is one that's still out there. That's why they dare not go for, go forward to have the one-cent penny tax. So that kind of puts everyone, I would argue, in at least a, a, a think-twice mode about where we're going with these things.
I'm going to have to stop you, sir. A fair question, a very fair question. I'm going to direct that to Councilman Brown, and I believe that he may have some answers, he might not have them all, but I believe he can answer some of those. I know I could address a couple of those.
Yep, yeah, absolutely, and your concerns about the credibility of the school board are certainly founded based on the past administrations. However, I think we're in a new term here with the, with the current school board and school superintendent, Eddie Tyler. Yes, there's a, what, a forty-page roughly contract that the, the city has entered into with the school board. Just like the current funds the city appropriates to the, to the five Fairhope schools, three hundred and fifty annually, this money will be monitored by the Education Advisory Committee, what will be the Special School Commission, I think is what, what will be formed if the referendum is successful.
Can I ask you just one question?
Sure.
In this forty-page contract, is it specifically stated that they will honor the budget process so that you're not going to lose any regular budget money if you get plus-up money?
Not only that, there's a, there is, it will be.
Because Mayor McMillan didn't have that.
The money will be placed in a separate account, as I understand it, the, the special tax district money will be placed in a separate account. So you could say, all right, how much spending, and you could, you could easily audit them and find out, how much spending did you have per pupil before, and how much spending do you have per pupil after? And it better equal that three percent special test, if it passes.
Right.
And in the contract, it says funds cannot be diverted.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, very fair question.
Thank you for being.
Very fair question.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Randy Emire from Hawthorne Drive, Hawthorne Circle. I've been hassling several of y'all over the last couple of months about this requirement for rental properties to have a business license. I'm very sorry I missed the work session, I understand it was, was on the agenda. I'd ask if it was, if I could get it on the agenda, and I was told the agenda was already set, so I misunderstood that, I didn't know it was on the agenda, I would have been there. But here we are on the thirteenth, starting on the fifteenth, they're going to start writing tickets, and I've got property owners contacting me every day wanting to know, you know, do I have to pay this, is this something that's required? I think I've had several good conversations with many of y'all, and there's a lot of better ways to approach this, there's a lot of ordinances that we can, we can improve the ordinance we have. The one we have is poorly written. The one we have is poorly written, it's wide open to misinterpretation and it's currently being misinterpreted because it references tangible assets instead of real property. So there's a lot of problems with it. I would love to get something done quickly if possible, but I understand, you know, wheels of government don't move that quickly. But again, I've been trying to get this into the limelight for several months now and I just want to make sure you knew that it still hasn't been fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Nemire. Anyone else? Looks like almost all we have left is staff, so I'm going to close public participation and I am going to read a letter from City Attorney McDowell concerning an executive session. This is the letter, "As City Attorney, I, Marcus McDowell, hereby request the City Council to go into executive session based on Alabama code to discuss the consideration the city is willing to offer except when considering the purchase, sale, exchange, lease, or market value of real property. The discussions could have a detrimental effect upon the competitive position of the city in the negotiations if the matter was discussed in public. And as City Attorney, I, he hereby request that the City Council, City of Fairhope rise from regular city council meeting on Monday, May 13th, 2019, to go into executive session. The city council shall be in executive section for approximately, I want to say, 30 minutes and at the end of the executive session, the city council shall return to the city council chambers to resume the regular city council meeting." So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we'll be back, the time is 7:36. I do have a resolution that I'm going to ask the city attorney to read because I'm having a lot of difficulty reading his writing. Sure you're not a doctor?
Resolution here, be hereby resolved that the council authorizes council president to draft an issue on behalf of the city, a letter intent to purchase certain land for future use by the municipality. Council president also authorized engaged services of a professional appraisal and the letter of intent should be contained on said appraisal.
I'd like to entertain that motion.
So moved.
Yeah, we wanted to act to amend tonight's agenda to add this resolution.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, and then on the resolution itself, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Shouldn't it be in there that it's also, the letter of intent should have it based on the fact that, if council approved?
That's going to be in.
It'll be in that letter of intent.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, absolutely.
I didn't hear that.
Yep. Well, it didn't say it in the resolution because it'll be in the letter of intent.
Right, okay.
That's a good question, very good question. Okay, any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.